It is January 22nd at 6:30 in the Rockford area school board office room, whatever. I would like to call the board meeting to order and we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Kevin Shadine.
Here.
Beth Prescott.
Here.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Morgan.
Here.
Jamie Hills from Q. We're all here, we have four.
Excellent, thank you so much. Item number two is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Rital Hoover, the agenda is in good shape with no needs for additions or changes?
It sure is.
Thank you so much. So that agenda is available for you on Board Book. I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's a first, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Shadine. There's a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor to approve tonight's agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight's agenda does carry unanimously. Item number three are public comments. Seeing if there are any public comments, there are no public comments this evening. Item number four is the consent agenda. Consent agenda has been provided for your review. Any questions or changes, Dr. Rital Hoover?
Nope.
Very good, thank you. So the consent agenda is there for us. I would appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Hillstrom. There's a first, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chris.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Morgan. There's a first and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of tonight's consent agenda signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda does carry unanimously. Moving on to number five, superintendent's report. January 25, superintendent's report. Dr. Rital Hoover.
Thank you, Chair Gordy. With a blink of an eye, we've made it to the halfway point of the school year and without question, anticipation and excitement are high for a wonderful second semester. Students and staff enjoyed their much-needed winter break and have since returned to school with renewed energy and enthusiasm. Kicking off the new year, we are fortunate to have REAM's principal, Ms. Brenda Nyhus, here tonight to share some information related to the goals as well as the celebration of student leaders. Before we get to Brenda, I'm happy to share some news from both Rockford Middle and Rockford High School. At the middle school, Jamie Mattson is finishing up a round of one-on-one meetings with all teachers to review their self-assessment on a newly created environmental ed rubric. They are discussing specific areas a teacher would like to grow as we focus on embodying our STEM environmental focus. This year, we will give us benchmark data that will help determine themes among staff so they can best plan as they head into year three of their R and R evaluation with Northwest Suburban. Our fifth grade trout in the classroom project has gone incredibly well. Most recently, some volunteers helped come to the classroom and teach students how to tie flies as they learned about various trout-related concepts. The program makes standards come to life and will result in our students releasing the trout that they raised into a Minnesota waterway later this spring. Given the increased popularity, they're in discussions about adding a second trout tank that will likely be funded through the generosity of the Rockford Ed Foundation and will hopefully be operational during the 25, 26 school year. The middle school teams continue to work diligently on their mapping of standards, their learning targets, and their focus on assessments, with each group in a different place based on their priority work and curriculum resources. There's a continued focus on connection with the vast majority of students, having already received a postcard acknowledging something positive. They've been doing their classroom, their goal is to reach 100% of their students by Friday, February 14th. Additionally, they've started the opportunity for staff to recognize students by filling out the form in the office, and then Mr. Warzeka then makes a point to connect with those students during that week. Staff can also acknowledge one another using that same form and staff shout-outs that are shared weekly with Mr. Warzeka's updates. Ms. Erin Sindelir is about three weeks into her new role as student support specialist, and she's really hit the ground running to triage a variety of student needs and create and communicate academic behavior and attendance intervention for a variety of roles. Erin and the team has also started weekly with student PLC supports, student support PLCs. All those involved, they do this to strategically discuss at-risk students and the systems that will support those students. At the high school, the high school staff were briefed on the leadership team, and the leadership team developed a comprehensive launch for our Say Something campaign, if you recall, from the Sand York Promise, the anonymous reporting tool. Were encouraged by the platform and they look forward to supporting students, staff, and families with that. The students have worked hard in their 90-day focus on academic interventions. Counseling staff has put together personalized lists for each teacher and then drew up individual plans for students to improve their grades. Let's hope this intentional focus on relearning helps students advance in their coursework and start second semester off very strong. The 90-day plan, focused on advocating for and supporting those students. They're going to discuss trauma-enforced learning and rekindle connections with students after the break, how to set solid foundations for success based on work they learned from first semester. The incoming class of ninth grade has started registering. That's all completed. Currently analyzing student choices, particularly elective determining staffing priorities for next year. Yes, we're already starting to plan for next school year. New improvements have been made in the food science labs, including new ovens and stainless steel tables, and they look forward to continued upgrades to this space and other spaces dedicated to career preparation. And finally, this is a big deal. We've had yet another successful cohort of CNA students. RHS Nurse Becca Morgan, some of you may have heard of her. She put that all, 10 of our students passed their knowledge and skills exam. Two of those students are already employed in nursing.
Right.
So that has been an incredibly successful program for our school district, for our families and our kids. They're really taking advantage of that. From a district level, way back in December, we had the opportunity to welcome our new board members, Chris Morgan and Kevin Shadine, as we hosted them for our new board member orientation. Both Chris and Kevin were gracious enough to carve out an entire day to tour our school, sit down with leaders from various sites, and learn more about the internal workings of our schools. Wonderful day and has proven beneficial as both Chris and Kevin have hit the ground running. Thank you guys for making time on that day.
Thank you for having us.
Other news includes a couple of significant meetings. Earlier this month, we had, as you all know, our school board organization meeting on January 6th. That very same evening, we had a full house of dignitaries as the mayors, city administrators of Corcoran, Greenfield, and Rockford, along with all six of our state legislators, two from the Senate, four from the House, joined us here at the board for what will be our first of an annual Mayor, City Administrators, and Legislators Roundtable. Event was a big success as all on attendance were able to share important information related to their work as well as ways in which they could partner best with Rockford area schools. On behalf of the board, I'd like to publicly acknowledge and thank all those who attended at the roundtable and look forward to many years of collaboration. On the operations front, we recently launched the new Advantage Rockford branding campaign. If you're scrolling social media, you're probably seeing it quite regularly. Includes a video that briefly yet powerfully highlights the advantages we offer our students and families attending Rockford area schools. The videos also lie on our webpage and has been disseminated via our social media platforms as well as through digital marketing in our area. Purpose of that campaign, as you know, is to share both with current and prospective families all the amazing things that are occurring in our schools so that each and every student can benefit from the large yet personalized opportunities that exist in what I call our right-sized school district. At our board work session earlier this evening, we discussed ideas, parameters, and potentially a small modification in next year's calendar and gathered some thoughts related to the school year '26, '27 calendar as well. We're going to be making plans for the calendar committee to convene soon with recommendations coming to the board shortly thereafter. Instructionally, we're gathering data and preparing for the MDE AdSIS application submission, which we plan to submit during MDE's first deadline, which is February 7th. Tangential to this work, a subcommittee of teacher leaders, along with learning innovation specialist Kathy Mattson and myself, have started to coordinate discussions about our overall plan for work in the area of multi-tiered systems and supports, otherwise known as MTSS, and our goal is to have a robust and comprehensive plan in place for the '25, '26 school year. I was also able to attend, excuse me, our quarterly Safe Schools meeting as well as meetings with our educational partners at Masico, Northwest Suburban, and the annual AMSD Legislative Kickoff meeting, of which Chair Gordy was there as well. On the nutrition services front, Chef Harlan has asked that I share that Rockford area schools will welcome a guest chef on January 29th and 30th. Chef Tony will be serving Moroccan chicken wings at the high school on the 29th and Peach Chris at the elementary school on the 30th. Tahoe will also be sponsoring some giveaways and fun culinary events on those days, and Chef Harlan is inviting the board to join the festivities. I did share that our board retreat will be on the 30th, so if anyone is able to attend on the 29th at the high school, you are more than welcome.
Can I get some of that peach cobbler over here on the 30th?
We will see what we can do. You know, I bet he will bring some over.
Because that sounded really good.
It's also worth noting that this week, January 20th through the 26th, is Minnesota Paraprofessionals Recognition Week. And in Rockford, we're blessed to work alongside so many dedicated, hard-working paraprofessionals. And while we do our best to share and thank them every day, it's important to recognize them publicly and on behalf of the board, as well as our students, families, and staff, I'd like to share a big thanks for the pares for all that they do. And finally, and in closing out this report, I'm excited to share that we are in track, we are in track to achieve our goals as stated in our first district operational plan or our DOP, and I'll providing an update with the board with respect to the progress a little bit later on in the evening. And that concludes the January Superintendent Report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very busy, good information. Any questions for Dr. Rital Hoover? Excellent, seeing none. Then we'll move on to number six, student achievement and growth. With 6A, we will invite forward Ms. Nyhus to present her REAM celebration.
We celebrate things, big and small, at the elementary school. And as most of you know, I call all my students down for their birthday. And we had one birthday in the building today, and I said, "What are you giving me special for your birthday?" And Harrison might have said to me, "Well, I'm not really sure. I saw you were going to have like a special meal with your family or anything." Yeah, and he said, "Then I'm going to go to a school board meeting." And I had to do a little recapping. So Harrison, if you will stand, I'd love us to sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Harrison. Happy birthday to you.
Hey, happy birthday.
I thought that was pretty cool. He was spending his birthday with you. We're going to celebrate tonight our letter leaders and math masters students. These are students that are at our oldest grade level, so they're our fourth graders. And the program's purpose is to provide leadership opportunities for our oldest students in the building and for our youngest learners to gain mastery in foundational literacy and math concepts. A huge credit to Rachel Yackish, who has put this together and has worked with these students. I walk through almost daily and see them down there working with our kindergarteners and just really starting to pair with those kids and give them some foundational skills and that little extra practice. So I'm going to turn it over to them. They're going to share with you what they do and give you some updates on how this program works. So this is Yackish.
Thank you. I, can I not sit? Is that okay? I prefer not to. So I have to give credit where credit is due before I even start. This idea did not come from me. This idea came from a former high school friend of mine who I spoke to at my reunion this summer. And she was telling me about all these things that she's doing, and she was talking about this program, and then I couldn't stop thinking about it, and I reached out to her and said, "Okay, we have to connect because this is too awesome." And the great thing about teachers is that they share, share, share everything. We don't hold anything to ourselves, like, "Can't have this." And so I really appreciate that with her. So thus, letter leaders, math masters was born and brought it to Brenda and shared it with Dr. Rital Hoover and just said, "I think that this is an amazing opportunity to grow leadership, to grow connectivity between all the students in our building." Unfortunately, today, we don't have our high school letter leaders or math masters here, but know that we do have some high school students that come over. And we actually have more. I got another email today. So I think we have six this semester, which is fantastic. I think we are too close in proximity not to have that connection between our oldest learners and our youngest learners. They just think these kids are the bees knees. So, letter leaders and math masters, like Mrs. Nyhus said, is really to maximize that every minute of learning time. We don't waste learning time, but there are times throughout our day where it's not happening because we have a transition or whatever it may be. And so we're maximizing the learning time at the beginning of our day with our kindergarteners and our first graders. And we have letter leaders on Monday and Wednesday and math masters on Tuesday and Thursday. And the students had to fill out an application. They had to learn how to write their first name and last name on the application, see reasons why they were interested in the program. Parents had to sign up so that they knew that this time was coming out of their win time and understand that this is a scheduling. Things are going to come up and we have to decide, okay, do I do drumming? Do I do math masters or letter leaders? Do I do X, Y, or Z? With the most important thing being that academics comes first. I know that you are in good standing with your teacher and behaviorally too. So we did talk a lot about the responsibility that comes along with that. And so these kids took it head-on, and to see them working with these younger students in the hallway is just amazing. So I just brought real quick to show you what our phone looks like. Went on scavenger hunt this summer, found all the things. It's a very simple binder. When they open their binder, they just have some tools inside. They have, you know, erasers and dyes. It's supposed to be very quick, very targeted, and fun. And so this is a letter leader. So they're working on letter sound fluency. Proven research says we need fluency in letter sound and letter name production. So we work on fluency. We work on fluency with writing letters, proper handwriting. And then this is opening closed syllables, just a really super fun game that they play with reading words. And we, it's not, we don't switch it up a lot. We do it very consistently so they know exactly how to play. Set five to seven minutes per rotation. One person has the timer, and the timer goes off and they switch kids. And I've heard great reports from the first grade and kindergarten teachers saying that the kids were just doing amazing and they're very respectful in the space that they hold and just how they're so great working with these students. So it's pretty awesome. So what I'd like to do is recognize them and have them come up and definitely give them a round of applause. So I'm going to call them by name and have them come up and get their certificate. And I did ask previously if they would be comfortable sharing with you what they do, and I said I would never force them to. Some decided, "Yes, I'd like to," and then they have changed their mind. And that's okay. But if you feel comfortable, ladies and gentlemen, to share how, if you like the program, how you like the program, what it means to you, you absolutely may do that. So Sylvia Shun, come on up. Where would you like them to stand? Anywhere?
Where you're at, Rachel, you're good.
I'll figure it out. David Gibson. Jocelyn Tombers. Reed Seeler. Harrison Besser. Violet Porzendorfer. Conley Freed. Ava Decker. Ava Arbo. Brooke? Tell me how to say your last name on there, right? You, thank you. There's some morphology, chronology with the CK spelling. Zach Person? Do you think that's, do I have everybody? Yes. No? I want to make sure everybody has one. All right. So who would like to share? Remember, you don't have to. If you'd like to share just a few things, I'm going to get out a few things. A few things about what you've got. Go ahead, Ava.
I really enjoy doing math masters because I get to see kids in food every day. I just kind of meet them and see them improve.
That's awesome, thank you. You want to go ahead? Go ahead.
I like seeing the kids get better at reading and writing rather than reading.
That's awesome. Go ahead, Violet.
I like doing about letter leaders because I got to make, I got to see the kids learn and how to.
Anybody else? Thank you so much for your time and your effort and building relationships with our kindergarten first graders.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted, first of all, thank you, Ms. Yackish, for putting this together. And all of you young people, wow. I don't think I could love this anymore. The leadership that you're showing is incredible, and I want to thank you for what you're doing and being those leaders in your school. I also want to thank your parents and guardians for raising such great kids and for having them here tonight at the meeting. So thank you very much.
Thanks, boys and girls, you did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Yackish. Birthday twins. Oh yeah, you could have done like a take a picture. We're not singing again, though.
Sing again.
I thought I was the only one going to a school board meeting.
See, look at even a fourth grader comes to us for a meeting on his birthday.
All right, Ms. Nyhus, we will keep it rolling.
You know, it's interesting, when people come for tours, the thing I talk a lot about is leadership. And we start leadership from early on, you know, whether it's Kindness Council or Smile Squad when they're little nuns, or, you know, and we just talk about all the opportunities for leadership. This is a huge deal for our kids for leadership. And, you know, really focusing on academics and focusing on helping kids. And as you'll see in some of our goals, you know, building those connections. And it's just, it's such a win-win. I see those high school kids come over, you know, who used to be mine. It's just been really good. So I'm super proud of that and super proud that Rachel, you know, just took it upon herself to come to us and say, "Can we do this?" So like I said, that's great. Tonight, I'm going to go through just some updates, general updates of what's going on in our building, and then we're going to go through our SIP goals. We'll talk a little bit about my professional goals and how those blend into those SIP goals. And then we're going to talk a little bit about arts mag and what we're doing generally with that as well. So that'll be my records tonight. So here are our general updates. We have a third grade concert tomorrow night, so we come back and literally after four days off, dive right in and have concerts. And I talked to Mr. Elias this morning, he goes, "Ah, we're ready. It's going to be totally fine." Of course you are. So they're excited about their concert tomorrow night. We have a great kindness challenge coming up, January 27th through the 31st. That's something we celebrate every year, and our counselors eat that and we really promote kindness. We do a lot of kindness activities throughout the year, but this is a week long that we focus on kindness and do a lot of really cool things around kindness. We have I Love To Read Month is coming up in February. Just some of the highlights, we do lots and lots of things. We'll do Battle of the Books. We'll have our all-day read where everybody dresses in jammies and, you know, we read all day long. Otherwise, they do math and reading class, they go to their specials. Otherwise, we're reading all day long. Wear a readable shirt, dress up days, just a lot of things all around reading and to promote reading. So that'll be really fun coming up in February. I'm going to be up the heart challenge week, February 10th through the 14th. Many of us know that as the old jump rope for heart. And our school has been one of the top fundraising schools over the years. And it is so funny because it is not promoted. It is not pushed, it is not, and kids just do it. And every year, I mean, even through the, excuse me, through the pandemic, we were the tops, one of the to, I think, second top school or third top school. And it's just, it's just something they do. See what they do, and you did see her last year, they doused me in slime because they made their challenge, met their challenge, and yeah, I'm all in, I'll do it again. So those are our general updates. We're going to go through the school improvement goals. These are goals that we've written. There are SIP goals, but our built team worked really hard on these. So this has been in conjunction with our team of teachers that are our instructional team. You heard Dr. Rital Hoover talk about middle school and high school, already talking about their standards and learning targets and assessments. That's no different than in our building, so we are doing that K-12. And so all of the departments are completing a universal structure that includes standards and learning targets and assessments. So everybody has that, it's updated, it's aligned. We are up for a review and reflection this year through Northwest Suburban in our magnet school, and that is something that they talked to us about last time. Our curriculum maps were not up to date. We knew that, we knew that that was something we had to add. Then we take that and we take it to the next level, and we also add arts lessons to that. And so we do put some arts pieces in there as well, so we know where those come. I think the bonus about that is if a new teacher walks in, it's, here's our curriculum map and this is what we do. And everybody just knows that and can follow that, and they're used. It's not, hey, we're going to write this and put it on the shelf. They really are used. So the universal template has been made available for the teachers or instructors to unpack the standards, learning targets, and assessments. Every time we have time, we give them time, so whether that's staff development days, whether that's their PLCs in the morning, we're trying to find those times where we can give them time to work on those. They have the option in their team to divide up the work however they want to. Some people might, half the team might work on the ELA standards, half the team might work on math. You might have specific, you know, you can slice that so many different ways, you know, and it's really up to them how they want to do it. As we look to a new language arts curriculum, we are really focusing heavily on math first because as that new curriculum comes in, we are going to make sure that we are aligning that as well, and we don't want to do the work and then do it again. So just so you're aware that that's coming secondly, I guess, is the language arts because of the new curriculum. So that is the standards portion of it.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sure can.
Two questions, actually. If you can share, Dr. Rital Hoover, would you mind bringing an example of what the curriculum map looks like, that the template, just so we know what it might be?
I think Kathy will have one at the next meeting.
Thank you. So an example of what's going, and do you feel like you're in good shape? I mean, we're halfway through the year.
We're getting there. We're getting there, yes, they're working hard.
Hopefully we're not scrambling in June.
No, no, and we've started very beginning of the year. They're working really hard on them, so that's really awesome.
It's a big lift, so that's why I was asking if you felt that.
It's a big lift.
So that's the standards piece. Moving on to the next one, which is learning targets. It's still the goal one. Again, that universal template contains the learning targets that connect to each standard. So they're writing kid-friendly, student-friendly learning targets. That is something we did years ago. Some teachers still hung on to that. Some teachers came in new and it's like, okay, we do what here? You know, and so it's nice to just lay all that out again. I'm really looking for those as I go in and observe teachers. And so all my non-tenure teachers, and I think I have 16 tenured teachers this year to observe, so, and just as you're popping in, you're hearing those and seeing those. So they're using them, and that's fun to see also. So that's being addressed as well.
Just a question, just that comment you made made me think of something. So do we have something in place for when those new teachers come in that it's like, here you go, rather than just depending on, oh, someone in the grade level will pass that along? Are we, are we, are we working on doing that so that they do walk through the door? Kind of, I just, I'm thinking about as a board, we worked really hard on our board handbook.
Onboarding.
You know, yeah, like, so that when you're coming in as a new first grade teacher, it isn't, well, so-and-so told me this, and so-and-so told me that, and so-and-so, that it's like, here you go.
That's what they're building.
Yeah, and one of the things that we do.
Awesome, that's what I was hoping was happening.
That I do personally, Jessica, is I'll sit down with teachers. I give them a little minute to get their feet on the ground, obviously, but I'll sit down with them, you know, early on and say, you know, I meet with all my new teachers, and I meet with them several times throughout the year. And one of the first things I do is say, okay, you know, we're going to start talking about an observation, what does that look like? Not yet. But here are the things I'm going to look for, and it's not a secret. I always say, you know, I know exactly, when I sit down with Dr. Rital Hoover, I know exactly what I'm being evaluated on. It should not be a secret. So here's what you are being evaluated on. And we go through the Charlotte Danielson, and we talk about learning targets. We talk about, here's what we do here, questions about that, do you need, what do you? And so we talk through all of that. This is, this document is only going to help that because not everyone has to. So, yeah, great question. No, it's a great question. And that's the thing, we want to set people up for success so they feel like they have the tools they need when they walk into the district. So then staying on the goal one, we'll go to the assessments piece. And again, the curriculum map will contain the assessments information that connects to each of the standards. And so each portion of that is being worked on this year. And like I said, they're working hard on. So, and then, we will add that arts piece as well, just because that is something that helps us. Like I always tell people, we don't have an arts lesson for every single lesson that we do in our school. My goodness, though. You know, I always tell parents, we're not whirling and twirling all day long, but we're doing enough of a difference that it has become a magnet school. And so, where are those big units? Where are those specific lessons that we add an arts piece to it? And then, Northwest Suburban really looks for that when we do a review and reflection and gives us feedback on that part of it as well. So, that's our first goal. Second goal is the student connectedness goal. Again, you heard a little bit about that from Dr. Reitlhofer. We're doing that in all of our buildings as well. In grades three and four, the students are given the My Sabers survey. It really just asks questions about, do they feel connected in their school? Do they feel as though they have a trusted adult? And if we look down to the bottom, letters are sent home to parents prior to the survey as an opt-out option. Some parents don't want their kiddos to take a survey. That's totally fine. They can opt out if they want to. And then, in addition, students in grades K through four receive weekly guidance lessons with the counselors. And everything has to do with topics of connectedness. You know, how to be a good friend, how to show kindness. It's really basic information and things of, you know, just how do you, how do you work together as a child, you know, with other kids? And so, they're really great lessons. They're 20 minutes, but they see every single class every week. And with two counselors, we're able to do that. And it's been wonderful. So, yeah.
Another question. What are we finding, I mean, you did the survey in the fall. So, what are we finding from our third and fourth graders? How are they feeling? What are we finding and what are we finding that we need to do? Is there more that needs to be provided, you know, as a board? Is there more support that we need to be giving, you know? So, what is it that we're finding for our kids?
And I think the nice thing is kids are feeling pretty connected in their, in their school. And if they're not, or if they're, we're seeing something that they're not, then we, we really sit down with, you know, whether it's teacher, counselor, or a parent, whoever, and say, okay, what's going on? What is it that this child is not feeling? But for the most part, we have pretty high scores of kids feeling connected, which is awesome. I think we work pretty hard at that at weekends. And like I said, whether it's through kindness, whether it's through, you know, just all the leadership opportunities, we try and have kids be feel connected at their in-building level. And then, we'll be able to compare the two, the fall and the spring, and see if there's any change. So, that'll be nice. Yeah.
Do you triangulate the data that you're getting for the first goal with, like, learning and assessments to that My Sabers to look for the correlation if they're performing low academically? Are they also, so do you triangulate?
We have not done that yet, but we will. Yes, because there's always that connection. I don't have a relationship with anybody, so am I going to be a high flyer at school? Probably not. Probably not. Yeah, and the data will show that. So, yeah. All right, going into goal number three. This is those individual QCOM goals that the teachers are, and this is based off of our FAST scores. So, 101 students are going to show growth by decreasing their risk level or showing significant growth within the high-risk categories. We have students that are in the high-risk area from fall to spring and the A-reading test in 110 students in the math area. And again, our teachers have already written individual QCOM goals around this. And so, everybody's working together on this to say, where, where do we need to look at this? Again, I'm going to credit Rachel and Kathy who have sat, are sitting down starting this week. And they're doing mini-data retreats. And so, they pulled the data from the testing and they're looking at this with teams. So, they're sitting down with teams and saying, okay, so where are we still struggling? What does this look like? The intervention team is pulling together and covering their classes and they're doing this during waiting time. And so, that is something that we talk about all the time. Yeah, we have the data. When do we have time to sit down and really look at it? And so, we're trying to make that happen within the school day, in just those mini, mini sessions. And so, like I said, Rachel and Kathy have sat down with teams this week and they're starting to do that this week. So, already digging through the data.
How, do you think you're on track with it? I don't know how this compares to normal. It seems like a lot of students to rise up a whole risk level.
It does. It does. And so much of that too is already looking at, okay, as we look at the science of reading and we look at change in reading, is that going to change this? We hope so. Yes. All the things that we're doing, even right down to the kids you just saw, all those things. So, yeah, that's the data we're digging through. So.
Another question.
Ms. Prescott, go ahead.
Thank you. So, the, this is the school-wide goal. Are the teacher goals a little bit more granular so they could specifically drill down to what aspect within? Like, A-reading is quite encompassing.
Yes.
So, then, they're more drilled down?
Yes. Yes.
And then, no, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Good? Yes, okay. So, we'll go in, these fall more into my principal goals. So, my first goal is to collaborate with the rooms teachers to continue to implement a structured literacy approach in each classroom in the building. When I met with Kevin and Chris, you know, I told them, I said, you're going to hear a lot about reading. You're going to hear a lot about reading from me. And that is, that's been a huge focus in our building, obviously. Collaborating with the literacy lead, which is Rachel, regarding monthly literacy staff meetings. So, we still pull together and have monthly literacy staff meetings. And then, we ensure that the teachers all have the opportunity to, we have a Google Doc that all kinds of resources are put together, which I won't show you tonight, but I'd love to share with you a little bit. I did share this with Jeff last year. It's by grade level. It's by, you know, all the activities. And again, I'll credit Rachel on that. She puts a lot of time into that. But lots and lots of resources for our teachers to use as well. And then, our iXL, we just looked at that data the other day of usage and to ensure 100% fidelity. And we've got high, high usage at the elementary. We've got a couple little pockets of folks that we need to just shore up a little bit, but hoping that that will help raise some scores as well. So, again, our progress is we've, I personally completed Core Reading Training this past summer. And so, that is something that I feel like I can at least, you know, help a little bit. And having that, I have not done the Orton-Gillingham, but Core was, Jeff and I both did that. It's a lot. But I, you know, it was a lot, but at the same time, I loved it because it was really fun to just learn everything and, you know, inhale all of that. Progress is happening in collaborating with the literacy lead to help facilitate the monthly literacy meetings. Those are happening with fidelity and ensure that all staff have access to the literacy Google classrooms. Collaborating with Resource Training and Solutions to assist in the implementation of the literacy coach. We are part of a group with a research training and solution. And I meet with these folks monthly. And that came years ago because of our low scores of our special needs kids in reading and our EL students. And so, that's something that we continue to do and they reach out. We've got a team right now. I think our people have changed every single year because we just want, you know, I'm leaving my job. And so, there's new people coming in. The team this year's been fabulous. And so, I met with them actually today. And they come in and just really want to help and say, what else can we do to support? And we talked through all these things and what we're doing. And they're like, you're doing so much. It's so impressive. It's really awesome. So, having just that extra layer of support is really neat. I haven't even shared this with you, Jeff, that they gave me some things as we go through and adopt a new curriculum, just some templates of things that, so you don't miss anything that they wanted to just share with us because we talked about the adoption of the new curriculum. So, they've been just kind of a nice support for us as well. Yes.
Some people will know, most will not. Can you just explain what iXL is for those that may not understand? And so, what it is and how it's utilized within your building?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, iXL is basically a program online that teachers can do math and reading support for. So, they go on and do additional support for math and reading and it can be some of those very basic skills. But, you know, and I'm going to go back, Jeff, to what you said as to, you know, you did this in your previous district. You know, you said, my kids are high flyers, but it's still helped everybody. And so, everybody does this. And they do, they carve out about, you know, 30 to 45 minutes a week and just say, here's where I'm going to plunk it in, you know? And just, it's that little shot in the arm to just do a little bit more. So, yes, all those things that are coming at them as teachers to say, here's what we're going to do to try and get those scores up. Here's what we're going to try and do to get those scores up. So, that's one additional.
And it's presented to the children how? How is it given to the child?
Say more about that.
Technology?
It's through.
Well, they do it under their Chromebook.
Their one-to-one device?
Yes, their one-to-one device.
It just needs to be stated that it's used through the one-to-one.
Oh, yeah, it is.
It's not teacher-led. It's not a worksheet. It's not.
And so, no, so the teacher helps walk them through it and then they are able to do that on their own device. Yes. So, the one-to-ones are super important.
Cool. And are you finding it difficult for the teachers to implement the iXL strategies with their classrooms? With carts or technology that's there? Are we still in good shape?
I would say that the machines are getting older. The one thing that you really see that's difficult as you walk into every classroom is we are still on the 19, 20-year-old active boards. A lot of them I can't even see. I sit in the back and I think, I know I'm not young, but I can't see the projectors. The projectors are dull. It's hard. So, a teacher will go back to something different. I'm waiting for the overhead projectors to come back, though, because they can see them. So, yeah, it's tough. It's tough. And as those machines start to die or, you know, the high school needs them, then they'll be taken from us. And then, we'll be on carts that will be shared. And then, that's going to affect this as well. So, yeah, it's tricky. It's tricky. But we're doing our best. Let's see. The up next is, again, we're doing fidelity checks to ensure all teachers are using iXL at rooms. Again, we got to look at that data just this week. And so, I'll be following up with some teachers along with Kathy. And then, Rachel and I have talked, I just, again, I always try and give people a chance to get their feet on the ground and kind of get their feel. She could leave this building. I could walk out the door for six weeks and she could leave that building literacy-wise. But she and I will do some more connecting and meetings to share and just make sure we're on the same page and plan and strategize and see what else we can do for kids. So, that's that goal. The healthy and supportive environment. This is, you know, my collaboration with the newly-formed Built and Volt teams to ensure that staff members have a voice and an outlet to share ideas and concerns. I can't say enough about these two teams and what a difference they've made in our buildings. It was interesting as I met with the folks from Resource Training and Solutions today. We were talking about goals and Built and how Built has decided this and how Volt fit in. And they're like, wait, tell me what this means again. Tell us what this is. And they're like, that is so cool. And I said, it is happening at every building. It's really giving teachers that voice to write the goals, to come together, to say, this is, this is all of us and give them that leadership. When there are concerns, it doesn't fall to a one teacher or a one situation. Hey, this is a Volt issue. Let's take it to Volt and Volt discusses it. And then, we bring it back to the staff and say, this is what this team decided. They interviewed for it. They decided they wanted to be on it. This has been phenomenal. So, I'm super, super excited about my teams. We have made this a year zero, so Built and Volt will be the same this year, except I will have one retirement. Other than that, yeah, I'm so proud of their work. And it's not easy work. So, I'm super proud of them. Again, our progress is the schedule. And we meet with Built and Volt monthly to ensure that there are notes and follow-through reactions when necessary. Our biggest up next, as we've done a little reflection on that, is the staff said, how could we share out agendas and just have a little more communication? Yep, we sure can do that. So, that is kind of our next task about that. I oftentimes will share things out at a staff meeting, but just that consistency so people know, oh, that was talked about. Oh, this is happening. So, we'll be increasing the communication on that. So, yeah, love those two teams. Love it. Love it.
Can I, are you? Do you ever have some of those that have asked you that question invited just to be a passive, an observer during that time?
About Built and Volt?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Nobody ever asked that.
But they are welcome to do it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. But nobody's ever asked that. Did you want to come?
Well, I would love to. Yes. I'm just saying for those that don't feel that the transparency or whatever may be.
And I think that events us learning, because this is new to us this year in our district and in our buildings, is learning. What else do we need to do to share that out? What else? And getting that feedback is how we get better. The thing I would say about our Built team that I'm really proud of and it's kind of worked out kind of neat is, you know, we have about a half hour in the morning. We start at 7:20 and at 10 to 8, that bell rings. And so, we start it and we do a half hour. And then, we have agreed that we also meet then at the end of that day for a half hour. So, I bookend my day with Built on a Built day. But then, we sometimes will say, okay, so we need to go chat with people about this or can we get a little feedback? Let's think about it before this afternoon. It's kind of worked out kind of cool. So, like I said, we bookend our day with our Built meetings, half hour in the morning, half hour in the afternoon.
To your question, I'm sorry, to your question, one of the things we talked about, Kathy and I, last week is, you know, we don't want these to be looked at as, you know, these elite groups, if you will. There's no, you know, secret handshakes. If someone wants to sit in, they're more than welcome. On any of those, on any of those teams, they can listen and hear if they so choose.
Yeah, there are no secrets. It's just a team that has come together and, like I said, interviewed and said, I want to put the work in. It's work. So.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott.
Yes, can you just refresh, especially for a couple new people, what the Built is and what the Volt is?
Built is building instructional leadership teams, so everything they talk about is instruction. We've talked a lot about our SIP goals on that. We've talked about, a lot about literacy. We've talked about curriculum and what are we going to do about a reading curriculum? That's all Built. Volt is, okay, the schedule isn't really working here. Or when we go out to the buses and all the high schoolers are standing here and our little nugs are coming out, those are operational things. And so, then, we work those out and figure those out, the little nuts and bolts stuff, as we do our schedule, as we do all of those things. That'll be a Volt, but a Built is all instructional. So, yes, absolutely.
A question.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Hilstrom.
For the Volt, if it's operational, are there people other than teachers, like the janitorial staff or anything, for some of those operational things that might not be fully like classroom management or anything like that?
We don't have any on our team. We have not had anything come up that is really that. And if we do, you know, we agree as a team, well, I'll talk to our head custodian and see if we can, you know, see if that's doable and then we come back together. And so, we always go out and chat with people that we need to, but we have not had anybody about that.
But those are all licensed staff. Those two teams are licensed staff teams. They have to interview. It's a combination of what we call our coordinating counselors, so it's EMR, building level principals. I've said on them as well. So, they're all, and there's a small stipend for each of those positions. And they're all through licensed staffing. But again, anyone is welcome to partake.
And I would say if we, and we usually have a little heads up of, you know, I've got three agenda items. People have asked me about this and this and this. If it involves one of our custodians, we'd happily, we'd probably invite them to meet. So, yeah. All right, so the next one is community school and family partnerships. So, my plan is to work closely with the selected individuals to train and implement the I Love You Guys program. In the Rockford area schools, I'll come back to what that means. Parents' first and most important relationship begins with staff keeping their child safe. I always tell parents, my most important job is to keep your child safe. I believe my second most important job is who I hire, who I put in front of your kids matters. Having a solid plan will build trust with parents that their child is coming to a place that will keep them safe each day so the events that unfold throughout the year are successful. As you know, we've been trained in Alice training, which is, you know, our protocol for whether it's an active shooter, whether it's a crisis situation. I Love You Guys is a broader scope. And there are lots of us that went from the districts to be trained that day and it was a fantastic training. But it's a broader scope of how do we involve just all of the entities? And if there is a specific situation of like an active shooter, the Alice training can be slid into that. So, it's not going away completely. The I Love You Guys, the program was started by parents whose daughter, that was their last text to her, to them prior to her being killed in the school shooting. And we did look at the I Love You Guys program because it's all available online. We started our reorganization process. And so, as we sat. And so, as we sat at that training, we're all like, yep, we're doing that, we're already doing that, we're already doing that. So, there's not a lot to do, it's a little bit of tweaking, it's a little bit, yeah, we, we need to add this little piece, but we're already doing a lot of it, 'cause we did pull that when we first started this, putting the reunification process together. So, that's kinda cool, 'cause we're already doing a lot of it. Um, and we said, I, I turned around to, you know, some of the principals and people behind me, I said, are you doing this? They're like, I know, this is great. And so, um, that felt good, that day, that we were that much farther ahead, 'cause some people are like, we don't even know where to start. Um, so I feel like we're in a good place, but we are gonna shore that up this year and work together. We already have a date on the calendar, where we're gonna sit down together and just shore it up and, and, and get this completed and ready. And then we'll roll this out to parents and staff next fall. Changing things up in the middle of the year to, for kids is really confusing, it's really confusing for staff as well. So, um, this whole program will be rolled out in the addition next fall. Okay. Um, the culture of collective purpose, um, I'll collaborate with the staff at Reams to ensure that students feel connected to their school and have a solid relationship with at least one adult. This feeds right into, um, the CIP goal that we had also. Um, again, students are gonna participate in the My Savers, in My Savers. Um, I do kindness lessons with the counselors twice a year. Um, we did one in the fall, we just planned, um, on Monday, our, our next one though, will be coming up in February. And it's just a way for me to always get in front of kids and, and work together, um, with them. We do that during their scheduled kindness lessons, so we're not pulling them out additionally, um, and make that work every year. Um, third and fourth grade students are gonna have an opportunity to participate on student council leadership committees. Um, I, I know we've talked about this before, but this was brought to me a couple of years ago. Um, both, both Allison and Katie, my counselors, you know, said, would you be okay if we got rid of the kindness council? And we went back to a, uh, student council and I said, say more about that, 'cause I don't want this to be a popularity voted, you know, kinda thing. And, uh, Katie Reynolds said to, to me, she said, I did this in my previous school and it was wildly popular. Anybody who wants to be on student council in third and fourth grade can come. You know, you might have two hundred people, she goes, I know. They come to an informational meeting in the fall. And if they, if they're interested, they come to an informational meeting and they're given all the information. Uh, the first year, they did this last year, I went to that first informational meeting and by about fifteen minutes into the meeting, I think fifteen kids got up and said, this is gonna be great. They said, but that's okay, you came without the information, right? And that's what you need to do. Um, but they come and they, there's a lot of subcommittees, so there's a green team, there's a kindness committee, there's, uh, student helpers, so they'll go down and help in, in like kindergarten classrooms. Um, there's, there's like five or six subcommittees and then they have work to do before they come next month. If they don't do their work, they don't get to come to the meeting, it's a responsibility. If they do the work and then they come and they do this next activity and then they plan for their next meeting. Um, so it's just oozing with leadership. And anybody who wants to be part of this can be part of this, so it's not a popularity contest of, you're the selected one out of the grade level who gets to be the student council member. Anybody can do it. I love it, it's been phenomenal. Um, so that, that is continuing. Um, students need, uh, students who need a strong connection and additional support with an adult are assigned a rocky buddy. So, uh, teachers, um, sign up and say, yep, I'll be happy to be a rocky buddy. And, uh, if we see kiddos that are struggling or just, you know, maybe if they got stuff going on at home and they just need somebody who is, um, needing an adult, they get together with them once, twice a week. Um, it is not to do homework, it is not to catch up on homework, they play games, they shoot buckets, they just, it's about being fun. They have lunches together, um, if you can, you know, in your schedule, have more than one rocky buddy, you can do that. Um, it's, it's pretty cool, it's pretty cool. I've had the same rocky buddy since kindergarten and, um, you build a pretty strong relationship. Um, so it's, it's, again, a, another way for kids to be connected to adults. Um, we've been doing rocky buddies for years in our building. Um, so up next is the second My Savers survey and the second kindness lesson, which is coming up in just a couple of weeks. Uh, and the last one is the stewardship of resources, um, monitoring spending, staffing allocations and budgets to remain within the total budget projection outlook for the, before Reams in fiscal year twenty-five. So, um, the progress is that I meet monthly with my secretary, Michelle O'Hern, to review budget spending. She, and she and I keep track of that together. Um, working with the CFO to better understand staffing budget allocations, um, at Rockford area schools moving forward. Um, obviously Bridget's pretty new to us, so we're working together and, and collaborating and finding out, you know, what, what works best for her and how, how she wants us to, um, do things together and then monitor budget transfers and orders. Um, up next is prioritizing staffing based on, on student enrollment. Uh, as we watch that all year long and they're still coming in, I got another one on my desk today, so woo-hoo, right? Um, work with the, the CFO and superintendent to strategically staff according to the student need. Um, working with CFO and superintendent to monitor and adjust future building budget lines and coordinate with the district directors regarding building programs and equipment needs and support curriculum. So, it's, it's just all overseeing all of those budget things and making sure we're staying within the, um, the guidelines and not overspending and yet hopefully getting what we need, so. And we've been really, I, I personally have been really happy with, with the work that we've done with Bridget, she's really been awesome to work with. And so, um, yeah, this has been, been a good, a good connection this year. Um, moving on, just an update on the artists in residence that our kids are working with this year. Um, obviously we have things going on in the arts all the time, every day. We've got, you know, our Fabulous Fridays, we've got just a lot of things, but this is a big portion of what we do, so I do wanna just highlight this. Our kindergartners, um, are gonna be working with our dance artist, uh, and educator Roxanne Wallace, and they do a life cycle of a plant. Our first graders will be working with Carla Nwaje, um, doing the life cycle of the frog. Um, a lot of these you will see around dance or movement, because we don't have that in our building, we do have theater, we do have art, we do have, um, so you do see a lot of movement, 'cause we try and get some, some opportunities that kids don't necessarily have on a daily basis in our building. Um, second grade, um, will be working with Julie Vowada, um, and she comes in and does Native American culture, literacy, visual arts and theater, including puppetry, storytelling, storytelling and acting. And then they always perform at Gramercy Day. Um, Gramercy's love those. Um, our third graders, again, we bring Carla back, Carla's at the top of her game in the, in the Twin Cities area, and then we bring her back and, um, she, she's already been there. She does a Native American culture, literacy, science concepts, including stars and constellations, moon phases, rotation of the earth. So, um, third grade had, had her here in November. Um, fun fact, she brings her mom with her every year. Um, I asked her, I said, how can I ask how old you are? She said, I have a birthday tomorrow, she was turning eighty-four, and her mom comes and dates with her. And the kids love her, love her, she brings her every, every time she comes. Um, and then, uh, the fourth graders, again, will be working with Roxanne Wallace, who also works with our kindergartners. Um, and they do ten or more math concepts, um, and they, so they, they're doing that, all them, all kinds of movement through math. Um, I will tell you, Roxanne has probably been in our, in our building ten years, Carla, I think, has been there longer. Julie has been there probably longer than me, and this is my nineteenth year. It, it's like old homewake when those folks walk into our building and they are truly at the top of their game in the Twin Cities area when it comes to residencies. Um, I can't say enough about them, I just love them. So, um, they do great work with our kids and our kids get so much out of that and it's, it's connected right back to corporate building. So, big deal in our building is the artists in residence. Last but not least, um, we will be doing our second all-school song, it's called We Are Here. Um, the recording's gonna take place on March nineteenth, we're trying to get it done earlier this year. Last year it was released on the last day of school, which was kinda fun, but, um, and then all our students will participate in that. Um, and so, um, we're gearing up for that, kids are already practicing. I walked out into the commons the other day and I could hear, you know, the music floating down the hallway and I thought, that's a cool song, what is that? So, I went and stood around the corner and just listened, like, oh, that's our all-school song. So, they're already practicing, but it just caught, kept, caught my, my ear and I thought, oh, that's really pretty, and that's what that is. So, um, yeah, we're in for another treat. That's what I have for you tonight.
Perfect. Any questions? Or comments? I, I appreciate the change in structure-
Yeah.
And the content that you-
We heard Mr. Renard set the bar pretty high.
We don't wanna give credit where credit's right. But, no, I appreciate the content-
Yeah, yeah.
And the structure of, of your report.
Absolutely.
Different from previous and, and I, I think it's beneficial for us to hear and, and see how you all are progressing and, and all the hard work you guys are doing, so thank you.
And I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you guys back there, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of work going on and I, I just, I give Michael so a lot of credit, people are working so hard every day. And, um, I, I tell them all, if I left tomorrow, I'd take y'all with me, there are great people in my building and I'm super, super proud of them, so.
Not allowed.
And I would, we have one more shout-out to Ms. Rachel Yackis, she's, of course, she's still back here. Um, doing a lot of work around literacy and doing a lot of leadership and I'm super, super proud of you, Rachel. Thank you. All the work you're doing. So, yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your leadership.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm the next one.
Yeah, you are the number seven Reams Rockets, the Rocket Spotlight. It's the Rocket, uh, the Reams show today, which is good.
Sure.
Dr. Redover.
Before we pass it off to the next one, I just wanna share that this is new to us now, so this year, and, um, we have so many amazing, um, employees, staff members, um, across the board. And we thought it would be wonderful for us to recognize, um, more people. So, this is our very first Rocket Spotlight, um, and we'll do this, uh, every other month, and tonight is the night for, um, Ms. Nigus and Reams to share their rockets.
Awesome, awesome. Well, I will tell you, um, this is one of the Bolt pieces that we did, um, anybody that, anybody can nominate anybody in our building. Um, and we had several nominations and I'm gonna tell you, we had a very hard time selecting, 'cause everybody was phenomenal. Um, I'm gonna read what was written about Ms. Erica Abel, who is our, um, our nominee and our selection this year, um, because it's, it's pretty incredible. This is exactly what the person who nominated her wrote, I did not write this, um, but I do wanna read this to you. Working on a variance in special education, Erica has jumped in feet-first into an unknown area of education. The rigors of teaching are great, especially in the world of constant change, adaptation, IEP 504 writing and more within a special education. Erica has taken this role head-on, continuously asking questions for better understanding, clarification, and to make sure that she's able to perform her job to the best of her ability. I'm continually impressed by Erica's hard work ethic and her commitments to a position that she was not formally trained for. Erica's willingness to be a team player and switch roles is admirable and she's greatly appreciated at Reams. Erica was a first-grade teacher, um, and agreed to do special education this year. She was one we were losing in budget reductions. And I presented this to her and said, would you be willing to do special education? I said, it'll be some of the hardest work you'll do. And I said, so, and we had a conversation, I'd like to go back to the classroom someday, absolutely. And I said, and when you go back to the classroom, you will be a hundred percent better teacher because of all you have learned. Um, we talked even as a special ed team this morning, um, you don't know what you don't know. And when you step into another world, um, wow, right? And she takes it on every single day with both feet-first, arms wide open, learned, that's IEP writing, that's, uh, um, all IEP meetings, working with kids of special needs. And I just can't say enough about her and I'm super, super proud of her and she deserves every bit of this award, Erica Abel. If you'd like to, if not, that's fine, too. It's not like you can't. I'm the shy one. Thank you very much, very nice.
Congratulations.
Very, very well-served, so.
Thank you very much for presenting, congratulations. And no words, we don't, yeah, we don't have an orchestra to make you get off the stage, so, yeah.
I can do a little song with you.
Awesome. Thank you for both. All right, we will then move on to seven B, our HR report, and it is Mr. McNulty, there he is.
Call him by name, I know.
There you go.
You wanna try a charge?
You come up and he leaves.
Okay, um, and they gave you a brief in the, um, package too, but, okay. Um, so, a couple of major things that have happened in the last, uh, couple of months is, um, our open enrollment took place starting November. Um, our committee got together a couple of times with, um, a broker and we went up for the bids and came back and, uh, with four. And so, uh, we went with, stayed with Medica, we have a two percent reduction again for this year that we're in now. And then it's, you know, if you're in education insurance then it's gonna jump up to possibly up to like fourteen, fifteen percent. That's a guarantee with all our bids we did. So, um, we did the open enrollment, it's a lot easier this year because we didn't switch companies. Um, but we've got through most of that, Cindy and payroll is finishing getting all the benefits. Uh, correct in here, she was working on that with this last payroll, because we need to get that in by January thirty-first, so. Um, and the staff, they've had some, anything show up, they have contact there. So, that's moving us smoother than it is last year, where we had some, uh, major issues of people not showing up. I mean, we're, we had a few of those still, but, uh, we're getting those ironed out. So, uh, thanks to Cindy and the rest of the staff for cooperating on getting our, uh, open enrollment done. Um, with that then, we also, Cindy and I have met several times during the year. Um, we work with a broker, we had MME, which is basically Marshman Fund Agency. Um, they did good work for us, but we felt they were not very proactive in their approach, um, so reached out to several schools, asked places they had gotten, who they had done and liked to do with schools. And I like to do that as, as administrator too, is to keep companies from being complacent, uh, going out and getting, uh, other quotes, bids or whatever you wanna do for services. We felt they were pretty complacent on their work. Uh, we decided to go with USI, there's not a, any kind of major fiscal change, they always get a certain percentage of your, uh, basically, uh, your insurance companies, which is Medica and MetLife for us. Um, that will switch over officially on February first, so we have a week and a half. Uh, letters have been sent out to MME, uh, conversations, quick what's had, it's, there's not usually a lot of conversation when they call us, why? Um, just tell them thank you and check with us in a couple of years. Um, so we are moving that all over, Cindy and I are working with, um, USI. You know, the staff really doesn't see much of that or anything, 'cause it's really not in their concern, so that's just pretty much in the backside, just so you have a knowledge of that. Uh, those are probably the two big things. Uh, along with that then, we also had a food service audit here, done, basically started back in the late fall, October, November, and kind of moved it through, uh, into December, working with Noel from, um, the Department of Nutrition, Department of Ed. Um, so I wanted to make sure, give a big thanks to Crystal Larson, who was right behind me here, and, uh, Harlan Edelman and his crew from TAR, because, uh, um, they were very happy with us, let's just put it that way. Um, which doesn't sound like everybody has that kind of, uh, transition on your food line. So, uh, that has been complete and with that then, I then have to do a food service review, uh, of two of the three breakfast meals being served and all three lunches being served. Where basically I rented from Mary from TAR, we retired last year. Uh, just kind of an oversight of tracking for accounts, 'cause to run some reports, match up, they're only for our own records, it's just something that is required by the state. Um, this is just an overview of making sure everything's in line with what, uh, people coming through, what TAR's doing. And then, as we are considered, considered the school food authority, uh, making sure that we're kind of more aware of what's happening. And it's, it's a complete learning experience for me, uh, because we have a vendor and I've never had to do this, so it's going smooth and I'm getting better at it, but since it's done once a year, it's gonna take a while. Um, but thanks again to Krista, she also helped out, 'cause she runs the report and then I have to do all the state reporting too, that, so. Um, and then just along with that, uh, which I didn't add in there is, we also are up for our school, um, RFP for our food service. Uh, so I am putting together, I have to work with the state, MD really oversees the template and everything, every step we go through on RFP, which basically means we have to go out every five years regardless, 'cause we have a third-party vendor running ours. Where we have to go out and get a request for proposals on our food service. And so, it's a lot, I think it was thirty-some pages of fun and giggles for us. Um, learning that one too, so I'm trying to actually, I contacted a couple experts in the area, uh, reached out, see if they could help me through a few things. Not 'cause I can't do it, but it's just a really good understanding of when I get this done and send this out and what's expected, because again, it's new to me. and what's expected. Because again, it's new to me, but it's going pretty smooth. I will have that out to the MDE for review here at the end of January, early February. They do a couple of week review, make sure we get all the, you know, Ts crossed, Is dotted. And then that gets advertised, which I'll be working with Courtney eventually on that. That goes out. I already had four food service companies contact me on this because they watch over, keep an eye on things. And now it gets sent out and advertised. And then, in about April or so, mid-April, we'll get those proposals in. I have to put a committee together. Krista and I are going to sit on that right now and get one or two more people. Most likely, right now, I'm going to go with the counselors because they work up in the cafeterias most of the time, just to kind of review it. There's a point system the MDE gave us. It's pretty laid out. I mean, it's, they've kind of structured it on how you're going to go. And then, of course, that recommendation is brought to the board. So, look for that in May. And then, that would start up on July 1st again, or reality in September. So, that is coming right there. If you have any other questions, you can always ask me about that. Again, first time for me, so it's pretty neat to kind of learn a new operational setting. But it's been good and I'll get back to you when I get more information on that one. Seniority lists were put out. You can see two around the consent agenda. Got them back in time. I got the third from, Ms. Nobby's right behind me, so thank you for her getting that out. We had a few changes to make on that, but that one for the teachers one will go in the February agenda. The early childhood and principal ones, which are very short, so it was very simple. Check back on that. Those are on the agenda for tonight for approval. That's just to make sure everything is in line for, basically, your continuing ed teachers and principals around that, to make sure they've got, we got the license assignment, the years and so forth right. So, if there is reduction stuff, it's basically a follow-through on that for all our licensed staff out there. And then, a few things right there on the finishing part right there. Even though we just had the seniority list, one item is required now by legislators. Get that, basically, an official list of staff out there that has to be given to the reps. Both of them are right behind me, so Scott and Krista, unless they left. They will have, I gave it to them last year. We gave it to them, I think it was late spring or the summer. It goes out basically three times a year, only having given them another list. Not that they haven't just seen it recently, but it has some different data on there. It's really a list of all their union members and some data on that that is now required by legislature. It's to help them make sure that everything is correct and have everybody for their contact on the union. So, that'll go out here, that's next week. And along with that, then, there'll be an HR bulletin going out next week Cindy and I put together. And the big one on that is the W2s. She's already sent out an email asking for electronic. Say here again, because our thing that we get from, we should say, the government is, it's also a big time here for fraud and stealing out of mailboxes.
Yep.
Yep, so we are going to put our bulletin, ask them to please get electronically done because you just run the risk of if it's mailed, which we have to do for anybody that doesn't confirm electronically, that somebody can steal it. Not that that happens or hasn't happened to people, but that is a big warning we get from the government. So, they'll be putting out a bulletin here going out next week, asking them, please get this done. Otherwise, we have to mail it out postmarked next Friday and then it gets out. It's your tax information. So, if staff hear this or edit, do it electronically because you can always just print it out. That's kind of the gist of all the stuff. There's always a few other things that we do on the side, but I wanted to get you the major stuff. And if you have any questions, please bring them my way.
Any questions for Mr. McNulty? Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
I just wanted to share that as board members, we can access our W2 through the SMART program. That's where we can get ours electronically. Next year for you guys and, but that's where it's located.
If you have any questions, just get hold of Cindy, right?
But if you talk to Mike or whatever.
So, it's not changed? Because I have never gotten mine in the mail.
Yeah, right. It hasn't changed. It's there.
Yeah.
It's where it's always been.
It's not uncommon for companies to not allow that to be mailed physically.
That is one of the upcoming things that they're actually, you know, you hope for that they change that regulation just because of the fraud going, but you can go through a process. We learned that laws you have to go electronically just to have a second.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McNulty? Well, good. Thank you. Appreciate your time. We will move on to the next item, which is a resolution to make reductions. Cover page for 2025. This is an annual item that we bring up to the board every single year in advance of staffing and budgeting for the 25-26 school year. Dr. Idler?
Yep, Trigordi is exactly right. This is an annual thing. And last year, we did have to make some reductions. I think this year, we're in a better position financially, so hopefully we don't have to. But this does authorize me to make those reductions if necessary in staffing.
Excellent. This will be a resolution item and I will make a motion to approve this. I would appreciate a second.
I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There is a first and a second. Any other discussion? Being a resolution, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Chris Morgan.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom.
Aye.
Kevin Chordeen.
Aye.
Beth Frasca.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. That resolution does pass unanimously. Moving on to the mid-year DOP, number nine, collective purpose. Dr. Idler?
I'm really excited about this. Thank you, Trigordi. The, this is, this is new for us here in Rockford. And I think one of the reasons why I'm so excited about just the overall district operational plan is that we did it together. If you remember, we, we did this work last, late last spring, early summer to see what goals do we want to do this year. So, the DOP itself is board approved. It's on our website. And this is the accountability measures that we agreed on to set forth for our school district. So, what you have in front of you is what we're, Kathy and I have affectionately titled the hub of this. It's not the actual DOP itself. You have access to that online. But we wanted to put these things through here and separate these goals. I believe you would have gotten the email from me allowing you to access any of these links. Some of them have data in it. That wouldn't be for public consumption. So, this particular sheet does not have those links live or the one in the board packet. But just for protection of any privacy pieces, but you were able to look at those things. What I like about this as well is, you know, we can say we have goals and I can come and tell you, we met them all. Well, how do you know you met them? And so, I believe it's important to have objective measurements and exemplars and artifacts to demonstrate that we are moving the needle. And so, I'm not going to go through all of these things. But you'll notice again, and this is incredibly intentionally, is they're all aligned to our strategic directions. As you'll see, everything we do is, so you saw, you know, Principal Nius's report also aligned to our district's strategic direction. So, that work the board did, I don't know, about a year, year and a half ago, it matters. And it resonates and I'm very proud of that. So, I'm just going to kind of briefly just walk through student achievement and growth. Again, that is a big reason of why we exist as a school system. And you'll see that there's a lot going on with respect to the work at Reams, newsletters to families, our local literacy plan that was submitted to MDE. We did put a job coach, I'm sorry, a literacy coach in place and there's the job description for that. It's, by the way, stop me along the way if you have any questions, but I'm just going to kind of walk through them briefly here. The instructional roadmap, which you've heard a lot about. This was not a one-year, you know, let's do this this year. There's a, there's a plan to all of it. And so, we have the visual there. There'll be another one that comes on for the next part of the, the next turn, if you will, on the road for next year. And the work that's happening at those respective buildings. Curriculum review process, we now have a draft plan in place to how we're going to review curriculum, curriculum so that it makes sense. And then, we have great collaboration and partnership from the users, those being our teachers. And so, this is already in place right now as they're looking at two different vendors for our literacy curriculum, which I'll be bringing to you guys later this spring as we're hoping to adopt one of them. Some of these things you've seen before, as I go through these things a little bit here, our CACR report, or comprehensive achievement civic readiness, you've seen that. That's also on our website. The ad to this application, you'll notice is in progress because that is in progress as we speak. The work that's happening in our APAC, the work in CTE, which we're very proud of. And then, again, the evidence with respect to our partnerships in our magnet program. Under the heading of healthy and supportive environment, there's our student connectedness piece. And like the My Savers, we have a secondary survey that went out to our kids and we're doing that spring and, spring and fall, or fall and spring, if you will, to look at that data. Our work around restorative practice. We really did that work last year, but I wanted to include that as well. And then, the wellness work that's happening throughout our district. And that's really led by Melissa Joseph, who we are absolutely blessed to have as our community ed director. She is the best of the best and she's done a lot of work around that. With that being said, we're also looking at year-to-year insurance comparables and some things of that nature with the wellness plan as well. And there's evidence again there. The safety committee, this was a heavy lift, putting together this guy. Courtney and Mike did a huge chunk of that for us, that safety piece there. The Raptor system, some FAQ around that and the data we're seeing through that. I also did get there the workers comp claims. I'll just share it there. We are slightly below last year, but I wish they were even lower. Most of those are injuries, student to staff injuries that we see in our buildings. So, I'll just share that with you there. Going to the community and school partnerships, our work around communications with our communications work there, the elected officials roundtable, stuff that you guys were very much a part of. We're putting a brochure together for early childhood and so forth. And then, the branding and social media analytics that we're doing to ensure that we're moving the needle there. You'll see the top of page four there, the community survey that went out to parents, guardians in the community. And you saw the baseline data for that earlier this fall. Around technology, I look at this, I'm like, boy, we did a lot of stuff already this year. You know, we have the new website up and running, the new email migration for our staff with our new domain. Moving into the facilities, community report, Melissa will have that ready for us when we do the final part of the share out. Partnerships with Rock, really proud of that. We moved that to Melissa Joseph being our liaison with Rock and that could not be going any better. She's the perfect person to work with them and they do have questions and she knows the answers and she's just a great person to work with. And then, we did a lot of work this last summer with Riverworks, Thousand Hearts, collaboration with the community there. Moving into the direction of culture of collective purpose, there's the DOP. And I am going to be asking you guys what you think of this process at the end of the year. Make sure that it still works for all of you. Roles and responsibilities, that's been tweaked and we'll tweak that annually. That document is on our hub and so our staff know exactly who is responsible for what, who to go to. That's really important. I think, you know, when I arrived here, I think there'd been so much turnover with leadership and so forth that, you know, who's in charge of that, who's in charge of this? People wouldn't get the same answer from the same people and now we have a go-to place on that document there. The quarterly superintendent updates at the sites between the state and the district. We did a lot of work around critical mapping. And I'm glad you brought that up, Trigordi, because that's something that will be shared by Kathy at the next meeting along with our work around data. So, I'm excited for next meeting because all of the work around instruction that you're hearing about, you're then going to see some of it, how we're implementing it, how it manifests in practice. We've done a lot of work around onboarding and offboarding. You've seen some of this already. I know Mike shared the offboarding survey results, you know, how staff feel when they're leaving, how we're welcoming them to our system. That's important. You want people, when they arrive, to know that they matter, that we're, we know what we're doing. And we have amazing tweaks to that here last, last week. The employee handbook, again, that was a huge undertaking. We have a brand-new employee handbook. This goes out to all staff in the, during workshop week or prior. And then, they have to, you know, sign off, do the vector that they've read it and understand it. That's good for a lot of reasons. It's good for people to have an understanding of what's happening within our system. It also helps us from a liability standpoint that say, yes, you were fully aware that this was what you were expecting. The next one there, and this is one, I don't think I could show you enough about this work that we've done. And this is system-wide. And I know that it was mentioned by Brenda that this is K-12. It really, truly is. We're doing the same work, and I say this often, our Oars are all going in the same direction from an entire system standpoint around the work that we're doing. PLC templates, the mapping template, you'll see it there, mapping guide, how to do it. You know, all of the self-assessment of how it's going. You know, we tell people, it's okay to be where you are. We just can't stay there. So, how do you improve from where you're situated currently and then ask for help? We've asked for our members of BOLT to evaluate what BOLT feels like to them, how they're experiencing it, how we can improve and get better on their overall program evaluation. And then, there's just some exemplars there around what we did in workshop week and then those three days we mentioned around PD. If you want to know what we did, it's right there. And then, how to register for Rocket Camp, which just happened. The BOLT work, again, the agenda, there's just some exemplars there. And then, we did an evaluation of the work in BOLT here in December. And so, we're tweaking some things to make it more user-friendly for those members. And especially, the communication that comes out to those who are not members of BOLT. Now, again, the people aren't, you know, in the back room smoking cigars, having these conversations. These are things that are real in the building and they're things that matter. Our work around coordinating council, and I talked with both of our EMR presidents today. We did a lot of work in the spring on this, primarily to get BOLT and BOLT up and running. But it's another place where we can solve problems before they become problems. And we still meet, we met today prior to the meeting. But this is, this is an important thing that our largest employee group is valued and that their concerns are always taken seriously. The instructional cabinet piece, that is moving along in the right direction. And there's an example of an agenda item there. And then, some more work around BOLT and BOLT with job descriptions. The job description for learning innovation specialist, which is Kathy. We believe in promoting and building capacity from within. So, you'll see that Mike has signed up, both Howie and DeWayne, for Masbo leadership training. And that's one of the things, as they came into the system or came into their new roles, they were nervous about how do we lead our peers? And it's really challenging to lead people who have been your colleagues and peers for a long time. And they've done an exceptional job of that. And I give Mike a lot of credit in working with them and how to navigate those things. And...
What was that program called? Sorry?
Masbo is the Minnesota Association of School Business Officers. Officers, thank you. And so, they do training. And Mike has connected them with some training. And it's an ongoing training. So, it's, they're going to be outside a few days working on this. And it's a little, what's that?
I love that we're offering that.
It's a little bit outside of their comfort zone per se. But it's really good for our system and they're willing to go and get trained and just learn a little bit more about leadership in general. This was something that they didn't ask for. They were, you know, I tapped them on the shoulder when our director of buildings and grounds departed and said, hey, would you have an interest in, you know, leading these two different areas, buildings and grounds and custodial? And it's, well, let's talk some more about that. And I'll share this. It, you know, they got a small bump in pay. It saved our district quite a bit of money. But all of that aside, the financials aside, our buildings have never looked better. And the work that they're doing is being noticed by our staff. And it's allowing our staff to do their work because they're not worried about things like cleanliness. I wanted to share something, too. I'm getting a little bit off-topic here. But the other night when we had our roundtable, Eric went upstairs and I was downstairs because we didn't know where people were coming in the doors. And I just looked around and I'm like, damn, this building is clean. And they didn't even know we had this event that night. And it just made me feel really good. And I'm going to say this, you know, aloud. We have the lead of the building back here, Scott. And, thank you. And what's happened within the building and those areas has been, has been pretty special and I'm very proud of that. We also are sending both, and I think this just started, Rachel and Kathy are involved in, like, you know, the other two gentlemen I mentioned, they're also new to leading peers. And so, that's challenging. peers, and so that's challenging. And so they're enrolled in a virtual online version of instructional coaching through the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and so we're growing and cultivating leadership in that area as well, and they're doing that together. And then the rocket recognition, which is now called the Rocket Spotlight, and that was tonight, and so that has manifested itself here this evening. Moving into stewardship of resources, you have some examples, there are some finance committee notes and agendas, those of you who've been on the finance committee are well aware of those, we have others, but I just shared a few. The goal of negotiating fair and fiscally sound employee contracts, everyone's got a contract, you know? I know that cycle starts over yet, and we'll start the teachers here soon, and three of us who are involved in that, four of us, I guess I will say, we'll get started on that with our friends at the EMR, and I'm hoping that we'll start earlier this year, I shared that with them today. And then I just shared some fiscal spreadsheets. Mike put those together and does a really good job and helps us to understand where we're landing. For those of you who are new to the board, I come to the board and we do a closed session, and I say, what are the parameters for our negotiations team? And you say, these are our parameters, so we can live with, and that leads us into our meetings, and the money can be put in all different places, and we're okay with wherever they put it for the most part, but that costing model or sheets help us to ensure that we stay within the parameters that the board allows.
Is that last number that matters?
Yep, that's right, that's right. And then the CFO, one of the things that, and I really want to compliment Mike, and I know he's not here right now, but he, we shifted his job around quite a bit as we restructured the district office. And, you know, I think it's still a work in progress, but one of the things we had to decide is, you know, what is CFO work and what is director of business, you know, services work? And so Mike and Bridget and I, you know, kind of put together some real clear parameters as to what's doing what, because there is some overlap. Mike does a lot of day-to-day stuff still with finance, but our big picture is only handled by Bridget. And so we have those job descriptions laid out and delineated in that way. And then the last piece here, and I know Eric mentioned it a little bit earlier, the tech levy, and this is something we're going to be talking about a lot. There will be, you know, Courtney and I made a decision today that February 20th-ish, somewhere in that ballpark, we'll be sending out most likely a postcard to all residents with, I think, a QR code with the survey on it. We want to get as much feedback as possible, and you've seen, the communications team has already seen that survey that we'll be sharing out. Just asking, you know, tax tolerance, thoughts on the levy, were you informed, all of those things, want to make sure that, you know, that we're understanding those things. I thought about doing, you know, some community, you know, open houses, but based on the attendance we got at the last ones, I thought that I would rather push some things out, physical things to their mailboxes, and I'm hoping that we get a pretty substantial response rate on that. You'll see the vote 2024 website link there, our community presentation is all there, the flyers to vote, the technology updates, the plan, all of those presentations that took place there. So you'll notice that the boxes, at least most of them, and I think some of them still might need to be addressed, but for the most part, you'll notice if these goals have been met or in progress, those of you new to the board. One of the things that I asked the board here last year was, we're doing this together, these are not only our goals, they're my goals, they're my team's goals, so I evaluate my team on their work within these goals, and then the ask is that the board then evaluates me on how these goals are going as we set forth. So I just wanted to share that, again, we're really proud of our progress, we have work to do. This plan is probably bigger than what we'll see in future years because we have a lot to do, but I will also come to you, I forget which month it is, I think it's either May or June, it might be June, where I'll bring this exact same document back with hopefully all of the boxes checked that say goal met, but there may not, we may not have gotten to something or maybe not finished something, but we'll be asking you to, again, take a look at those things and make sure that we're on track, because again, they're our collective goals, and just as I'm being evaluated, I'm accountable to all of you to make sure these things are getting done, because you guys put your stamp on it and said this is what we're doing this year. So any questions about the mid-year district operational plan and report as it's presented?
Any questions for Dr. Rydell Hoover? So you did share a copy, a Google cop, the form document, some of the objects are right protected still, and we're unable to have access into those, is that purposeful, or is that?
No. I think it just must have been the way the rights were done. I think if I created the doc, I probably had the rights to share it with you, but it could be if somebody else created it, it may not be so. If you just, if there's one of those links you want to see more of, yeah, just request it and I'll share it out. And again, I would share the entire thing publicly, but there's some private information that can't go out to everybody.
As we continue to go on, the ADSES application is due in February, correct, for the first round?
There's two deadlines, we are aiming for deadline number one, which is February 7th, so it's pretty aggressive. The actual application, by the way, came out last week. So that's a little frustrating, but we had already started the work based on the application template from two years ago, and there's not a lot of changes there, but we are looking to do a few different things with ADSES, which will then have an effect on our overall staffing budget for next year.
And that's?
And instructional model.
Right, and then the question is, previously, we would have preview into what the application was going to be as board, because there is impact, or is it 60% or 66% of?
Yeah, I think it's 65.
Yeah, or something like that, two thirds-ish?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Right, so is there opportunity for the board to review and have?
Sure.
Input on that as well?
That's going to be a little challenging with the due date we have, but I could certainly, it probably won't be done until about the 7th, but I can certainly share it out with the board. I can tell you, just in practice, we're looking to replicate exactly what we have now and potentially add some math, ADSES work at the elementary school. So in a nutshell, that's what we're asking for. The narratives might read differently, but we can't go over, I think it's $1.4 million in our ask, we're probably going to ask for somewhere in that ballpark. We're in a pretty good spot for staffing overall, but I will definitely try to get that application out to you before it goes to MDE. But in a nutshell, again, we're asking to, there'll be no reductions, but hopefully potential additions to our ADSES work. ADSES has become more popular statewide, which is not necessarily great in a year that they're struggling with a budget, and so with, without question, we're hoping that they will at least let us continue what we've been doing, because it's, we're really feeling like it's been effective. And so, so we'll see, we'll see where that goes.
Basically, he answered my question, I was going to say, can you give us in a nutshell what you're going to ask for?
No, appreciate, not that we don't have faith that you're looking out for the best, we just want to make sure, because
Past.
We have to have some good conversations.
I'll also share with you, since you brought it up, we're doing it very differently this year than what's been done in the past. So what we did this year is we brought everybody together who's been, who's part of ADSES, and we said, here's what the application is going to look like, and we actually assigned tasks. So we said, everyone on the call, this is your one area where we're asking you to provide input. So Kevin Neff had a lot of input on the data, for example, because we need to have data. But we also asked our counselors to say, what do you think this should look like for the behavior access piece? We asked, you know, the math and the reading folks to do the same, and so everybody's been contributing to this. I think last time there were some surprises, from what I understand, I wasn't here, and I don't want to play Monday morning quarterback and anything, but there will be no surprises on this application for anyone. I just don't think that's the way to go.
When is award provided? When is announcement of award?
I think it's going to be late spring. I'm hopeful, I mean, I think there's still a lot of question as to what's happening at the legislature, and so I'm hopeful we'll find out by late spring, but we're going to go ahead and staff. I feel comfortable doing that with the understanding that we're going to at least be status quo.
So with the implementation of the app, right, so if the ask is awarded, do you see staffing at the level of the ask, or are you going, or just not known yet?
It's not known yet.
Okay.
But we're, I don't want people to be in limbo, so we're going to, we're going to staff as if the status quo exists, which we're fortunate that we have, where I think Rockford was one of the first schools to get on board with ADSES, and so, and they like us there, you know, whenever they have, you know, meetings or whatnot, and Jennifer Sprague has done a great job, she gets on all the meetings, and then she puts out great notes for everybody, and she's been our ADSES lead.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? All good, perfect. Thank you for the report and the information, it's all good stuff, so. All right, moving on to 9B then, policy review first read, you will see that there are several policies in there for the new board members, those policies that are just numbers, 614, those are worded as MSBA or as organizations would publish and say, this should be what your model policy is. There are some policies that you will see, like 524R, there are some amendments that would be Rockford inclusion into what language is in those policies, so those are, the Rs mean Rockfordized.
Rockfordized.
Policy. So the idea here is to provide us a first read, and the hope and intent is that you will take the next month to read over what these policies are. If you have any questions, you can direct your questions to Dr. Rydell Hoover or a member of the policy board, which is Jessica and Janie and Beth, right? But make sure you include Dr. Rydell Hoover in your question, do not email all of them, just one of them, please, because we don't want to have that problem.
Just as a, sorry.
Please, Jessica.
I would just say, as a committee, I would, I would just recommend directed to Jeff, and then we can go from there, but that's what I would just recommend is just.
Policy is great, because I have half of you already there, so.
And then we'll come back next month with a second read, final read, and opportunity for changes, adjustments if necessary, and then approve those, so those policies are there for you. Ms. Johnson?
Just something about policies, so we have a policy on policies? So it tells us how to approve policies? So when there isn't any, like, major changes, like it's maybe a statute number change or something like that, typically those can be done in one reading, but we try to do a first read and a second read with all our policies, because that's what our policy says to do. Sometimes there's an emergency policy that has to happen, and those can happen in one meeting, but that is where I, we're very much notified on that and are made aware of that, so.
And if you look at our December agenda, you probably will see that these were listed as a first read, but it was asked that they get moved to this meeting as a first read for you to have opportunity and not have to approve something you didn't have good view of the issue.
And if you want to access policies on the school board, if you go to the school page, go into district, school board, and then you can go right to policies, and you can see, like, what the 100s focus on, the 200s are school board policies, and so on, so you can go in there if we have any questions on anything.
Ms. Hilstrom?
Remind me, between the first read and the second read, there was a small tweak, does that change anything? There's some verbiage in one of them at the end that I, is a little hard to read.
As long as there is good notification and that change is made before we approve at the second read.
And then just for your guys' information, when you're reading the policy, I mean, you want to read the whole policy, but the changes are usually highlighted in green so that you can really focus on those areas to see what the changes are, so.
All good? All right, we'll move on to number 10, resolution acknowledging contributions, Dr. Rydell Hoover.
Yeah, there is a plethora of donations, and I would like to, some of them substantial, but we are appreciative of any and all, those who are willing to contribute their time, talents, and resources to our school district. So on behalf of district administration, I'd like to applaud the donations for the month of January.
Thank you. Yep, there are a great deal of donations to help with our baseball field, you can see that in there, so outstanding work, and thank you to the community and everyone that is donating for our district. This is an action item, I would appreciate a motion to approve tonight's contributions.
I'll motion.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, there is a first, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Shadine, there is a first and a second, and discussion. This is a resolution, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chris Morgan.
Aye.
Kevin Shadine.
Aye.
Beth Frasca.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom.
Aye.
Excellent, so that does carry unanimously, thank you to the community for your support of our district. Item 10B, Rockford area school board retreat, Tuesday, January 30th, 9:00 a.m. in the district office conference, Thursday, January 30th, 9:00 a.m. in the district office conference room. Policy committee meeting, Monday, February 3, at 4:00 p.m. in the district office conference room. Board work session is going to be moved.
You've got to start over.
Policy committee meeting Wednesday, February 19th, at 4:00. Awesome. Board of Ed work session, Wednesday, February 19th, 5:30 in the district office. Let's see, continuing on, facilities committee, Wednesday, February 19th, at 7:30 a.m., which will be in the district office conference room. Regular meeting of the Board of Ed, Wednesday, February 19th, at 6:30 in the conference room as well, so a lot of meetings, a lot of stuff on the 19th. And with that, we are going to move to 10C, which is a closed session, so pursuant, just have to make this a little bit bigger, sorry. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D dot 05, we will be closing this meeting to discuss the performance and evaluation of our employee, which is a superintendent. So as people exit quickly, I would appreciate a motion to move to closed session. Appreciate a motion move to closed session.
I'll take a motion to move us to closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Frasca, there's first, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Shadine, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Post, we are moved to closed session at 8:17 p.m. And we are back in open session at 8:35. Now we have the opportunity for very quick board committee updates, I'll go first. MSBA meeting was awesome, right? Learned, appreciated the opportunity to listen to Thursday's speaker, you know, just good connections, right, with people, and understanding that they all have gifts and moving forward. Good opportunity to have conversations with fellow board members, didn't really have much time to, well, I didn't attend any of the breakouts because it didn't fit into my schedule and didn't make it Friday. The only other thing I had was an MS, or a Northwest Suburban meeting, they gave preliminary numbers for applied and accepted for Northwest Suburban. I shared, Dr. Rydell Hoover was in the meeting with me, I had shared that the numbers seemed a little low, but they seem on par with where they were last year, and I asked if we were making calls to make sure that all the people that could apply should apply, and the answer is yes. That's me.
And you went to AMSD.
And I was at AMSD, yes, I was, and got to listen to the unfunded Band-Aid conversation, and the legislators just pushing back gad a little bit, which is always a fun thing, so.
Sweet.
Oh, and board prep, yeah, that too.
I can go, yes, I have not done any board work in the last few years.
Perfect, Ms. Johnson?
I had, so in December after the last board meeting, I had an early childhood committee meeting, the one that's related to the MOA, that all the work that needed to be completed by January 1. According to our half of the committee, we have met those requirements, we're kind of in discussion right now whether the other side agrees we did or not, and that's another story. Anyway, so we're working on that, Masico meeting that evening, and it looks as if next Tuesday I will be elected as board chair for Masico, so a new role taken on there. I'll keep you updated on that.
I'll keep you updated on that. We had our organizational meeting, board prep call, MSBA went to that last week. Was really good. Breakout sessions, for some reason, I'm not remembering the one I went to. I have all my notes and I forgot, I even had the bag with my bag and I forgot to grab it. I have my notes, but I forgot the one. Went to a couple of different ones. Sorry, on the spot right now, I'm forgetting. I did share, I think I put in a couple of documents into board folder. One of them that I wasn't able to attend, because I attended a different one, was Watertown has a great CTE program, and they shared all the information, and through some connections, I was able to get their PowerPoint presentation. So that is in our folder, which I'm really happy about. The speaker on Friday morning was Hamish Brewer. He's the skateboarding tattooed principal from New Zealand who has a New Zealand east coast accent, which is, was very interesting. Jamie and I were actually like, hmm, where's he from? It sounds kind of Australia, but there's a little bit of east coast to that. And then he's like, New Zealand, and then he's talking about being out in Virginia. We're like, oh, yeah, makes sense.
That is a hard accent.
He was great, so much so that while he's speaking and he shows his book that he has, I went on to Audible and bought the book because I was going to be doing a four-and-a-half-hour drive and listened to three-and-a-half hours of it, and I've listened to another hour and a half of it, so I only have a little bit left, to listen to. Amazing person and what he has done to just move schools, like, just move the needle is absolutely astounding. And to never say those kids, that every kid doesn't matter, their background, where they came from, every kid. You can move the needle no matter what, and what it takes to do that. And first of all, it takes that environment in the school, with the staff, everybody on board together, being a family, starting there, and then that filters down to these kids. And it's quite incredible listening to all the different things and the people who gave testimonies in his book to working with him or having him as a teacher, having him as a principal, the difference he's made and how he's done that. I would highly recommend it. It's really a great book, and I look forward to actually having conversations with Dr. Riedelhofer about it because of things that possibly we can, we can implement here in Rockford and just really make a difference and move the needle. So it was, it was pretty awesome. I really enjoyed that, so.
I can go. Couple of things more parent than school board, but there was a mini concert at the elementary school that parents were invited to, and they could go into the classroom and see their kids doing stuff. And I just thought that was really great because one of the things in the survey about, to the community, was parental involvement at the elementary school, which is kind of surprising. But at the same time, elementary school parents want to be super involved. So seeing some of that where you can get parents in in other creative ways was pretty cool, so. And then organizational meeting in the roundtable, and then a couple of coffee and conversations, which I saw Eric on also. He didn't mention that either. There was one thing about the curriculum that someone mentioned in the mini, they actually have a curriculum night for the parents where they get to kind of see the upcoming curriculum that's going to come out. And there was a lot of people going, that makes me super nervous. Nobody came, but I'm just thinking it might be a nice thing when things are going well to give parents a chance, and then, you know, then they go. They're willing to show us everything, and so I thought that was an interesting idea. And then the MSBA, or the MSBA convention, I went to a bunch of roundtables, which are just like 20-minute quick things, and sometimes I get the best information out of there. There was one that was done by a company called Radar that does staffing, and basically says the way schools do staffing on the internet makes it hard for people who are just on their phones to find staffing. And it was really cool, and they gave a lot of great suggestions. And then the guy who was in charge of running it actually said he is already working with Mike in our district for finding staffing out there. So it was great, I was excited about it, and then he said he's working with someone, I was so excited. And then there was also one on board books. They gave all kinds of tips and stuff, and I know that I don't utilize board books to the best that you can. And there was a couple of things follow. Basically, the chair can run the meeting and your screen will just follow what they go on. So as they go to the next one, it follows it. And also personal notes that you can write to yourself and are searchable then in the future. So things that I hadn't utilized before that I found and I went, well, that's cool. And then breakout sessions, one was on using different metrics other than the MCAs. They said using ACTs other than the MCAs, but they had kind of a whole system, and it's written into their policies for Eden Prairie. Things like, we're going to use two out of three of these metrics, like MCAs, ACTs, and then another one that they do just because of the opt-outs happening in the MCAs. That being said, they fully pay for all of their students to take the ACTs if they want to, so that's a huge consideration. But there were other things in their policies that it was kind of cool how they were evaluating that their students are learning and growing. And then I went to, another one that I found interesting was a referendum reset, which was interesting. It was great, it was a little frustrating because so many things that they said we did the last time. So it was, it was like, oh, yeah, we do that, we did that. And it's like, what else can we do? But it was, it was a reminder of some of the things that we need to continue to work on, so. And that's it.
Eric, have a.
Go ahead.
It's not really a question, it's, she brought up the parent night for the new curriculum, but it could potentially tie into the need for technology because I would pretty much assume the new, the new curriculum is heavy on technology. So if we had a parent night that explained all that, that would also serve as, this is why we need technology.
They are doing a literacy night.
Okay, so, but if she talked about with the new curriculum, it could have that feed into, this is how we, how technology.
Whenever we can mention technology, as Eric so gracefully did earlier.
And that's where I thought, ooh, we could do both. And not like throw, shove it down their throat so much, but just say, this is the part of the curriculum that is reliant on technology.
It's nice for people to know that. People don't understand necessarily how things are being implemented, so, yeah.
Ms. Shadine?
So I went to the MSBA for the first time, that was a lot of fun, learning experience. I went to just one of the breakouts for the MSHSL, MSHSL, yeah.
Appreciate your minutes on that.
Yeah, yep, so that was really, I really enjoyed that. That was some notable things, is the ninth grade thing. I'm not sure if you guys knew that already, but they will now be a part of the league, so we'll have to, I don't know if there's any funding or any, or any things we have to do.
We won't do anything any different, it's more about eligibility. Yeah, we had to vote on it.
Insurance, eligibility, all that stuff. So that's kind of the main points out of that, so.
Mr. Morgan?
I have none.
Excellent, perfect. Easy, short and easy. And Jessica, I know you're probably going to want to share more, or you don't?
I think I'm all right.
All right. One thing that I shared with Kevin at the, at MSBA, I was on a board chat, and I almost like yelled in the meeting because one person, they're talking about their new chair, what's the expectation, how do they communicate all this stuff? And they're like, well, yeah, I have a one-hour meeting every single week with the superintendent to talk over things that are going in the district. And then once a month, I have a one-hour meeting with every single principal in the district. And I'm like, and I looked at Mr. Shadine, and I said, there no way in anything is that any part of our duty. Never, ever, ever. Anything, only, that's our line of communication. And I almost fell over on the call when that came out, and it's one of our neighbors, so, just saying.
The board chair meets with every person on the committee, on the school board, one hour?
No, 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 with the board, with the board chair and the superintendent.
And then the board chair and each principal.
Once a month.
With a superintendent?
No.
No.
Wow. Yeah, like, that is way overstepping in our world. The answer is no. So just sharing that as a thing that some places are a little different. Yeah. But I appreciate what you guys do, so thank you. Let's keep that going. All right, anything else? All right, last one's hour, just want to adjournment. I make a motion to adjourn?
No, I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn at 8:48.